First order of business in tonight's meeting will be the swearing in or administering the oath of office, is more appropriate, to the elected council persons. So I'm going to come out in the front and do them individually, so that if there are any family members here that wish to take pictures, you'll be able to do that. Okay? So the council person will come out in front after you administer the oath of office, then the city clerk, or the future city clerk, will have you, we hope, will have you sign your certificate. Mr. Bonifant? Here. Not the roll call yet. I will say, "Do you," when you say your name, "do you..."
Yes. Oh, Richard Bonifant.
I do?
Okay. Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear to or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Lord.
Oh, there he is.
Sign the form after you get sworn in.
You raise your right hand, I will say, "Do you," and then you'll say your name, "do you, having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury." Congratulations. This is not your first time.
No.
Please raise your right hand.
When you say, "I do," did I want something?
No, no, no. I'll say, "Do you," and you say your name. "Do you, having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I will.
Congratulations. Just in case she thinks you're not an official. Mr. Kimmel. Raise your right hand, "Do you..."
Bruce Kimmel.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I will.
Congratulations. It's okay, that'll plug. There's no rule against that. "Do you..."
Do you.
Mr. Sachinelli.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I do.
Congratulations. What can I do? Eloisa Melendez. Is this the way you wanted to?
Yep.
She told me where she wanted to stand before the meeting, so we're trying to accommodate that. Raise your right hand, please. "Do you..."
Eloisa Maldes.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I will.
Congratulations.
Wait a minute, there's an X here.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. "Do you, having been elected to the city of, to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
Certainly will.
Welcome aboard. Ms. Bowman.
Daddy.
"Do you, having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury." Good. Welcome back. "Do you..." "Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I do.
Welcome back. Think after going down through all these, I wouldn't need to read it off of here, I haven't memorized by now, but... "Do you..."
Michelle Maggio.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I will.
Welcome back. Mr. DePalma.
Michael DePalma.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I will.
Welcome aboard. Raise your right hand. Ms. Shannon O'Toole Giandurco. Glad I don't have to say that name twice. "Do you..."
Shannon O'Toole Giandurco.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I will.
Welcome back.
John Ignary.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I will.
Welcome back. Last but not least.
Tom Livingston.
"Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I do.
Welcome aboard. Okay, the next item on the agenda, well, we don't have to have the participation, there's nothing on the agenda. Next item on the agenda, resignations and appointments.
You want me to call the roll?
Sure. Yeah, it's all right, that's a good idea. Why don't you call the roll, even though you're not officially the city clerk yet?
That's true. November 17, 2015, please be advised, this meeting is being taped for video and audio broadcast. Assisted listening devices are available. Mr. Bonifant?
Here.
Mr. Corcello?
Present.
Mr. Hempstead?
Here.
Mr. Kimmel?
Here.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Present.
Ms. Melendez?
Here.
Mr. Serasis?
Present.
Ms. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Mr. Caides?
Here.
Ms. Maggio?
Present.
Mr. DePalma?
Here.
Ms. O'Toole Giandurco?
Here.
Mr. Ignary?
Here.
Mr. Livingston?
Here.
14 present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of the city clerk. Do I have a motion?
Corporation counsel or city clerk?
That's right.
Corporation counsel or city clerk?
Yeah, I was gonna do her first as a, yeah. A motion? Mr. Kimmel?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Donna King for city clerk. I think she, last few years, she's done an excellent job. She's smart, a hard worker, responsive, and she's added a lot of professionalism to the job, and I think we're lucky to have somewhat such high caliber in that office, so I'm honored to nominate her for secretary of state.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. "Do you, having been reappointed as the city clerk for the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office according to your best skill and judgment, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My next appointment would be for the appointment of corporation counsel. Do I have a nomination?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Caides?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mario Capola. Mario, you've got the city through some very difficult issues over the last couple of years, and I have full confidence that whatever comes in front of us in the following upcoming two years, that you will be able to handle in stride, and you allow me to sleep at night, so congratulations, and I look forward to meeting, working with you for the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Mario Capola.
"Having been appointed to corporation, as corporation counsel of the city of Norwalk, solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office according to your best skill and judgment, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury."
I do.
Congratulations, welcome back.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, prior to my remarks, will be the election of the council president. Do I have a motion? Mr. Ignary?
I am pleased to nominate Bruce Kimmel for council president. With 16 years of experience on the council, the last four are the most interesting, I think he's in a great position to continue to lead the city forward.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Hempstead?
Having, it's been a weird world, weird world, the last four years with Bruce, but I don't mean that Bruce has been weird. The situation certainly has brought up, but Bruce is somebody who can pick up the phone and have a conversation, be comfortable with conversation. I know his interest has always been pretty much spot on for the city of Norwalk, so I look forward to working with Mr. Kimmel once again.
Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So, Kerry, congratulations, Mr. Kimmel. Before I turn the meeting over to Mr. Kimmel for the next item on the agenda, I would just like to thank the members of the common council, those returning and those newly elected, for your dedication to the city of Norwalk in putting your name forward for a job that at times, not only difficult and tedious, but it can be thankless at times. But I know that you're here because you want to serve this amazing city, and I applaud your willingness to serve, so thank you all for being here, and God bless you all, and I look forward to working with you productively and accomplishing so much over the next two years, so my... And last but not least, traditionally, the council does not meet the second Thursday in November because it's just before Thanksgiving, unless there's some compelling council business. We're not sure yet whether we are going to be meeting, but on the possibility that we're not going to be meeting, I'd like to wish everybody in our audience, our council members, a happy, healthy, and peaceful Thanksgiving with your family, and I'd also like to take just one moment of silence in the vein of Thanksgiving to pause in remembrance of the tragedy in Paris a couple of days ago. Thank you, and God bless America. Council president, Mr. Kimmel?
First of all, thank you very much, I appreciate this. I noticed that there's an item B on the council agenda under council business, I will make some remarks then, but first let's get through some of the administrative aspects of this meeting. First of all, we have the announcement of the majority leader, and that will be for the, the majority leader will be John Caides. And now for the minority leader, Shannon O'Toole Giandurco. I'm sure Ms. Giandurco, Ms. O'Toole Giandurco and Mr. Caides will do a wonderful job, will be working together on a lot of important issues this coming year. Now we have the, the appointment of the assistant city clerk. Is there any nominations for that position?
Yes, Mr. Kimmel, I'd like to nominate...
Mr. Caides?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Irene Dixon. I've had the opportunity to know Irene for the last almost three years. Her work ethic, her passion for, for helping Norwalk, she's, I think she's on every board, every volunteer position available in Norwalk, and I look forward to working with you for the next two years, and congratulations.
Are there any other nominations for this?
I was gonna make a comment, ask if there are any other nominations.
Any other nominations for assistant city clerk? Okay, any other comments?
Yes, I too am very, very pleased that Ms. Dixon will be working in the mayor's office with us to push the city business forward. I agree with Mr. Caides, Irene's work ethic is above reproach. She is so involved in the community that it's a pleasure to have her on board, and I'm looking forward again to two great years working as a team out of the mayor's office, so thank you.
Okay. Seeing that there are no more nominations, I'll call a vote, everybody for Ms. Dixon, assistant city clerk, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Before I go on, I'd like to say that we will be taking a group picture at the end of these proceedings, which will not be long, and anybody who has, wants to take some individual shots or shots of us, you're welcome to come right up when we're at the very end of the meeting, okay? The next order of business is the appointment of the council representative to the historical commission. Is there, are there any nominations? Mr. Ignary?
I'd like to nominate Tom Livingston. He's the newly appointed chair of the land use and building management committee of the common council. He is also on the advisory board of the Rowatton Historical Society, and the stand, he knows the president well. He has also worked with David West Wallen and other members of the Norwalk Historical Commission, and will be a great addition to that commission.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Livingston, please raise their hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Next order of business is the appointment of the council representatives to the maritime authority. Are there any nominations? Mr. DePalma?
I'd like to nominate John Ignary, Travis Sims, and Fay Bowman. All three have expressed a lot of interest and enthusiasm about it, so I think they'd make, they'd be great assets.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Hempstead?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Shannon O'Toole Giandurco. I have to slow down when I say that.
Okay. Now, if I, okay, are there any other nominations? Now, if I understand correctly, we are nominating four people for four positions, essentially?
Yes.
Okay, just as a show of solidarity, all those in favor, please, of all four nominations, please raise their hand. All those opposed? Abstentions? They pass unanimously. Congratulations. The, the next order of business goes to appointment of committees, and I'd like to say, I, since Mr. Caides did a lot of work trying to figure out how to put this together, I'm going to cede the floor for this point to him to make the announcements of the council committees and a few other committee appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Before I get into the committees of the common council, I'd like to first go through a commission and authority which do not require council approval. Actually, the water pollution control authority, and those names are John Ignary and Bruce Kimmel. And on the Norwalk Facilities Construction Commission, that name is Tom Livingston. And now I'd like to hand the floor over to Ms. Giandurco, O'Toole Giandurco, I should know that three years later, for the minority caucus's representation on those two.
Thank you, Mr. Caides. We put forward Mr. Bonifant's name for that commission. Thank you. Facility.
Facilities, yes. Okay, so we'll leave that one spot open for the WPCA to a future date. Great. Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Okay, before I get into the committees of the common council, I'd like to first, you know, I see a lot of the friends and family of the council here tonight, and I think you, you guys deserve a thank you for, my son's waving at me, for, for the sacrifices you make and for picking up the slack to allow us to be here. It's, without you, we wouldn't be here and be able to do the work we're doing. And so I asked Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we can give them a round of applause right now. I see a couple of the newly elected family wondering what sacrifices he's talking about. You guys just wait and see, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Mr. Caides?
Yes, sir.
My family just wants me out of the house.
They encourage you to run. Did they fund your campaign?
Okay.
It's really funded, but I'm worried.
All right, getting into it. Finance and claims, Bruce Kimmel, chairman, John Ignary, John Caides, Travis Sims, Nick Sachinelli, Doug Hempstead, and Shannon O'Toole Giandurco. Land use and building management, Tom Livingston, chairman, members Fay Bowman, Nick Sachinelli, Bruce Kimmel, Michael DePalma, Richard Bonifant, and Michelle Maggio. Personnel, Nick Sachinelli, chairman, members Eloisa Melendez, Michael Corcello, Michael DePalma, John Ignary, Doug Hempstead, and Michelle Maggio. Public works, John Ignary, chairman, members Eloisa Melendez, Fay Bowman, Michael Corcello, Tom Livingston, Richard Bonifant, and Michelle Maggio. Health, welfare, and public safety, Fay Bowman, chairwoman, members Nick Sachinelli, Michael DePalma, Steve Serasis, Eloisa Melendez, Richard Bonifant, and Michelle Maggio. Ordnance, Eloisa Melendez, chairwoman, members Michael Corcello, Tom Livingston, Bruce Kimmel, Travis Sims, Doug Hempstead, and Shannon O'Toole Giandurco. Planning, John Caides, chairman, members Travis Sims, John Ignary, Tom Livingston, Fay Bowman, Doug Hempstead, and Shannon O'Toole Giandurco. Last but not least, recreation parks and cultural affairs, Travis Sims, chairman, members John Caides, Michael DePalma, Michael Corcello, Steve Serasis, Richard Bonifant, and Shannon O'Toole Giandurco. And that is the lists of committees for the common council.
Okay, as far I, as far as I remember, this is an announcement, there are no, there's no voting for this, okay. If there are any adjustments made down the road, we will take care of it, and we will let the public know at appropriate time. The next order of business is the adoption of the council rules. Is there a motion on the floor?
Aye.
Oh, Ms. Melendez?
I will move it and add, re-propose amendments to three different rules. The first rule, number 11, the amendment should read, Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure - 2010 shall be the rules of the council, except as a conflict with the rules mentioned herein. The second amendment, number 14, amendment for item F only, comma, the control and chair of the meeting shall pass to the council president. The third amendment, for rule number 21, any appointed member or employee of a city department, board, agency, or commission, or any board, agency, or commission to which the city appoints the members, at the request of a council member, may address the common council on matters directly pertaining to his or her department, agency, board, or commission, without the need for suspension of the rules. Those are my three amendments.
Okay, three amendments on the floor. Are there, I'd like to address the amendments, we have three amendments on the floor now. I understand there may be some other amendments, unless there's some other ideas that conflict with what was proposed, we can move those now, or we can address a different amendment, it's up to you, or we can add different amendments. Mr. Hempstead?
procedural question. The council, every term starts its rules afresh, so are the rules in our package then are the rules of this council, so I'm trying to figure out the amendment part, since this is what was in our package. There's no true amendment, because the other rules end with the last term.
Well, we are...
You were, you're just amending them.
Yes, this is, what we are doing is, we are, we are amending the rules from last term. Everything, everything other than the amendments that remains the same.
I think what Mr. Hempstead is saying is that we must first adopt the rules from the last term, and then we can amend them, is that correct? Well, no, what I'm saying is that that term ended, the council rules end up with that term. The council adopts its own set of rules each term, so there are no rules except for these that we're moving to adopt. There are no true amendments.
Yes?
It's my understanding that even the last set of rules were entitled, adopted by the common council, November 26, 1985, amended November 19, 2013, so the past practice is going to be to amend the rules.
The rules continue to exist unless they are amended out of existence, and I think that's how we've, we've proceeded in the past. If there are additional amendments that need to be made, I believe we are allowed to make them at any point during, during our coming term. So there are three amendments presented by Ms. Melendez on the floor. Are there any other amendments? Okay, the first we have to, all those, now, I can offer them, if there is, if there is an objection, please let me know, but I will offer, ask for a vote on all three amendments as a package. If you feel uncomfortable and would like to vote on each one separately, please raise your hand.
Just a question?
Of course.
One of them's just updating the Mason rules.
Of course.
Uh, what are the other two? I'm sorry, because we didn't get that.
Oh.
Thanks. And, control and chair of the meeting shall pass to the council president, in what kind of case?
He's just changing the wording to make sense.
The wording never made it, the council rules as they exist now, never makes it clear that the control of the meeting reverts back to the presiding officer, so we said for item F only, and for item number 21, we just added a little bit, a little clause there, that someone, a city employee or any, anybody employed by the city cannot just come and speak in the middle of a council meeting, they have to, it has to be a request from a council member, that's all. We just clarified the language. There's no substantive changes, really, in any of the rules.
I'm just curious, is it...
Of course. Of course.
Says they can, they can address, at the request of a council member, okay.
We added that.
Yeah, okay, I, I, sorry, it's a last minute thing that I need to.
So, okay, so, before it said that they.
Could just come and speak.
They could just come and speak at any.
So, you know how when we are on a certain item, we can have, like, Tim Sheen come up and say, like, at this, with this amendment, we have to ask him to come up, as we've done? Just the rules never reflected it.
And that's the way it's always done.
The rules basically reflect the practice at this point. No one comes to the, speaks to the, speaks to the council without our permission first, from the audience or department. Any further questions on the amendments?
Do you have any further questions on the amendments?
Any further questions on the amendments? Okay, here are none. All those in favor of the three amendments, please raise their hands. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, they pass unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Melendez. Uh, I would like to reiterate, we will probably not have a meeting in one week. Uh, we'll see if, it's two days before Thanksgiving. Traditionally, we do not, uh, we will let everybody know officially, and we will cancel the meeting at appropriate time, so it's fair to the public. Uh, I should also announce that, uh, I will work with, I plan to work with the city clerk's office to arrange a meeting with Tom Hennig from the State Freedom of Information Office to come down to Norwalk, as he does every couple of years, for a forum, one FOI. We can invite other city agencies, Board of Ed, however we do that, but we've, we've done that before, and it's been informative, and, uh, so, uh, we'll get to work on that right away. Under B remarks, first of all, let me truly, let me say thank you, and it's a thank you from the heart. Uh, as Mr. Hempstead alluded to, for me, it's been, uh, to quote, to quote my favorite rock band, uh, a rather long and strange trip, to put it mildly. And, uh, and I have to thank, first and foremost, uh, my wife Kay Anderson is here. Uh, without her, believe me, I would not be sitting here right now or on the council. I would still be at Norwalk, I would still be doing good things, I hope, but I wouldn't have been on the council, so, uh, thank you, Kay. I appreciate it. There are a number of other folks, too many to name, mention by name, who during the last four, five, six years, uh, worked with me, discussed things with me, uh, argued with me, and, uh, I want to thank them for their, their patience, their trust, and their respect. And, believe me, the feeling was always mutual. Now, regarding, uh, the, uh, coming year, you know, it's, I think a number of us are very excited. The city is alive, a lot of things are happening, and we're going to have a lot on our plate, uh, for the next twelve months. Probably first and foremost, only because of its difficulty, is charter revision. So, I'm recommending that the minority leader and the majority leader begin as soon as possible discussions in their caucus on charter revision, how you feel about it, where you want to go with it. We bring those discussions to the mayor, and we move forward as a council in an expeditious way, so we don't find the clock ticking and ticking and ticking until it's too late. So, we should get on, get involved with that as soon as we can. Of course, the operating budget, it's being crafted right now, as, as we meet. Every, every day in city hall, departments are working on next year's operating budget. What we need to do is, number one, continue our collaboration with the Board of Education. We need to work closely with them, so we understand their perspective, they understand our perspective, and then we come up with a budget that minimizes any tax increase, that is a fair balance between the needs of the city and the needs of taxpayers. The capital budget this year, I think, will be extremely difficult, but extremely important. We understand that there are a variety of facilities issues that the Board of Education is currently addressing. We're going to have to dig into those issues. It might be costly, but interest rates are low, so we're going to have to move forward on a variety of facility problems, which the Board of Ed is going to present us with. Senior tax relief, one of the things I think many of us are proud of, is this current year, we expanded our senior tax relief program, we increased the number of eligible particip, uh, participants, we've increased the number of folks in it, we've more broadly promoted it, and we've increased the credit, the tax credit. I promise the finance committee, as soon as possible, will begin again to look at senior tax relief. We see what we will do, what, we will try to approximate what we're allowed to do under the law. It's not as simple. It's, there was a lot said, a lot of good things said, uh, during the last campaign, because we all want to do right by our senior. But we are bound by state law and our own chart, our own ordinances and how we proceed. So, we will look at it carefully, and we will figure out a way to do whatever we can to alleviate the burdens on seniors. And of course, we're going to continue to monitor our redevelopment projects. There is a lot happening in the city. We need to get the Washington Village project, transformation project going, we've got to figure out a way to have that lawsuit withdrawn, we've got to move with the mall, looks like things are pretty good there. Things are happening on Wall Street and on West Avenue. Like I said, the city is alive. The city is moving forward at such a pace that pretty soon we'll turn around and say, my, my, we've really transformed it. So, we have a lot on our plate, I'm looking forward to it. We're going to address these issues in a productive way and in a civil way, without some of the rancor that we had the last couple of years. I think we can do this in a way where we walk out of here every two weeks with a smile on our face, go out, have a drink together, eat together, and when next time we see each other, we'll still be smiling. And that's the goal. So, let's see if we can do it, and thank you very much.
I would now like to administer the oath of office to Mr. Sims, if you would walk around the front. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you? Having been elected to the common council of the city of Norwalk, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office according to law, so help you God, or upon the pains and penalties of perjury. Welcome back.
And seeing that there is nothing further on the agenda that I can see, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
You beat.
No, Ignary wanted it.
You wanted it?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Now you know how Doug feels, right? He doesn't look that way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Now, we're gonna stay here for our pictures.